I'd like to call the. Thank you. Getting everyone's attention. Yeah, I hope you guys can hear me. So I'm gonna call the Monday, May 22, 2023 Gardner Planning Commission meeting to order. If you'll please rise and state the pledge of allegiance with me.
Our allegiance to the lie of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. We'll try and get better on the mic. If you can't tell, I have no voice. We'll move into roll call, starting on my right.
Combs, present.
Commissioner Soza, present.
Commissioner Ham, present.
Commissioner Mater here.
Commissioner McNear, present.
Commissioner Juneman here.
Great, we have a, we have a quorum of six, um, six intendants and one absent. Moving down to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. We have two items placed on the consent agenda. Would any member of the public have those items removed and placed onto the regular agenda? Any member of the commission would like to have an item moved to the regular agenda? Seena, I'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda made by McNear with a second by hand. All those in favor, please make it by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I'm gonna say six to zero since.
Yeah.
Since Cooper just walked in.
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
I was just gonna note for the record that Commissioner Cooper has now joined us, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Sorry to start without you. Okay, glad you're here. All right, moving down to the regular agenda item. Item number one, Arisa Hibachi Food Truck, CUP dash two, three, dash zero, two. It's a conditional use permit located at 312 West Main. This was continued from March 27, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Staff, do we have a presentation on this item?
Yes, we do. Good evening. Jesse Hunter, Planner, City of Gardner. This item first appeared before the Planning Commission during its March 27 meeting. At that time, the item was presented, staff recommended approval with 16 conditions, the public hearing was held, and after discussion about the site with various questions, the Planning Commission tabled the item until the applicant and owner could be available. Here's a condensed summary of the site. It is located at 312 West Main Street and is about one-third an acre in size. It is zoned C1, which is the central business district. The property is surrounded by residential. The future land use map of the Gardner Comprehensive Plan labels the property as community mixed use. Since the March meeting, staff has met with the applicant and discussed potential solutions, including submitting a revised application with a new site plan showing additional details and proposed improvements to mitigate adverse effects on nearby properties. On May 15, the applicant submitted an updated application with a completed owner's affidavit, a monthly pest control service report, and photos showing various existing conditions of the site. There was no revised site plan submitted to show additional details such as proposed improvements or mitigation measures. The photos, however, do show various existing site conditions, including changes made since the March meeting. After consideration of the comments heard during the public hearing and as part of the Planning Commission discussion on March 27, the consideration of the existing conditions and operations on the property and no additional details associated with an updated site plan, staff believes that the presence of a permanent food and beverage use on this property creates an adverse impact on the surrounding residential properties. Staff recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of denial of the application as proposed. If the commission determines a recommendation of approval to the governing body is in order, there are several possible changes that could be made to the March 27 conditions of approval, such as reducing the length of the conditional use permit or increasing the landscape buffering. With us tonight are the applicant and representatives of the owner, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Jesse. So if the applicant would like to come forward and have a presentation, please state your name and address for the public record.
Good evening. Good evening. You said state name and what was the second part?
Name and address for the.
My name is Steve Knoblock. My address is 15500 Lake Road 8.
Perfect.
Thank you, guys, for having, giving us the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I wanted to start off with, let me get my bearings here and see if this, okay. Some introductions first. I am not the owner of the property. The owner is my father-in-law, Herb Klimp. He's been here, local to Gardner, since 1990. Prior to that, he has, um, I'm sorry, he was a resident since 89. Prior to that, he and his family have spent weekends, holidays out at Gardner Lake since the 30s. His father was one of the first to build on Gardner Lake. Herb is 84 and has some medical conditions that prevented him from attending the last meeting. He's also not able to attend today. I'm here on his behalf. My wife and I are working towards obtaining the property to continue with the development of it. He has not been able to maintain it as he likes, and it bothers him. His inability to attend today and the previous meeting, he wanted to make sure we stated that it was not meant as any disrespect or looking lightly upon the decisions. He, he was, he wanted to make sure we shared that with you. I am, again, his son-in-law. I've been in Gardner my whole life. I graduated from here. I've lived here. My family went to school here. I'm sharing all these things with you so that you know that we are local. We're not from outside of town or into the area. Our understanding is from the last meeting, there were concerns from both the city and from surrounding residents. As far as the city is concerned, we received a list of 16 items, and we've been working with the city to address these items, trying to do the best we can to accommodate them. We are new to commercial property management, so we're learning as we go. Some of the things, this is some of the items that we've addressed up to this point. Most of them pertain to safety as far as parking, flow of traffic, people going up and placing orders. We have addressed those to the best of our knowledge. We've also moved the trash facilities, encased them as per regulation. So our efforts have been to do whatever we can to meet the requirements. Our plan at this point, there were three items that were not included or that we hadn't completed yet, and the reason for that is because they're gonna be a little more in-depth. We're gonna have to plan with the city, get more approval, and we just wanted to make sure we did that right. So the fact that they are not finished doesn't mean we aren't addressing them, that we have the intentions of addressing those as best we can. At this point, that's the city items. As far as the residential items, we're not 100% sure if there's something outside of these 16 recommendations that would be included in that list, but I can assure you that we are dedicated and we have full intentions of working with the community and making sure that everybody is happy with the arrangement. As we, as Jesse stated earlier, it is a commercial property. We're just trying to operate a business on it as best we can, and I understand that residents have been used to it being vacant for a number of years, so it will be a change, but we feel we are gonna do whatever we can to accommodate them. I guess in conclusion, where we are is that we, we welcome the opportunity to work with you, the community. We've got a business, it's been, it's been a business here for about a year. They employ people, pay taxes, provide a service to the community, and we just want to do whatever is needed to make sure they can continue to do that.
Thank you. This is not a public hearing item this evening, so we're not going to entertain any public comments. I can tell you, though, that this item, regardless, I'm looking at Dave here, just to kind of prep the audience, that this item, regardless, goes to council, whatever happens, and there will be an opportunity for comments then. Is that loosely correct?
It does go to council. The official public hearing was actually held back in March before you as the Planning Commission. We did have citizen comment at that point in time. We have also had citizen comment into us between that meeting and this date. As far as going to council, yes, your recommending body, the council, is actually the one that makes the decision on the conditional permit issuance, whether to approve or deny it. They usually, I will say, they're not obligated to have a public hearing or to hear from the public at that meeting, but they do have a practice of asking for the applicant and sometimes the citizens to speak, and that's usually at the mayor's prerogative, so it is not, I can't say with 100% certainty that would happen.
Well, I was just thinking that typically the first line item is like, public comment.
Correct.
So that could be, I'm just, you know, I just don't want citizens to be like.
Right. I just don't wanna misrepresent that it's another public hearing.
Right, but it, right, and this isn't a public hearing either, so that's why I don't want, you know, citizens to understand that this is just, this is planning commission. There will be a potential opportunity. Usually, I don't think I've, not seen public comments as a section on an agenda in quite a while, so just, just helping them to understand that we already did the public hearing. Just process, that's where we're at.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, we do have the applicant. Thank you for being here tonight for any questions. I'll go and start the commission question discussion on my, my right, Commissioner Combs.
I, I do have just one overarching question. So in the 16, there were two mentions of, of the trash receptacles that the owner presented that. My, my question is, outside of the, the requirement of having them there, could this body help me remember the frequency in which those, or at least the dumpster trash receptacles would need to be cleaned or removed? That was one of the concerns in the public hearing, is what's the smell?
Didn't that come up at all, Dave, in your additional discussions? Cause I did have a, that is an idea.
The applicant, the applicant may be able to respond best to something like that as far as the actual service on that dumpster area. I will say things like noise, light, smells, and odor are subject to our public nuisance codes as well as anything with a conditional use permit. So there are code enforcement actions that can be taken through that process as well whether the conditional use permit is approved or not, so I don't know if the applicant's representative may be able to speak better to trash hauling and what goes on there.
Absolutely.
True. Before the public hearing, it was once a week. Since then, it's been changed to two times a week, so it's doubled that.
Okay.
And I think I said earlier that it had been relocated and it's covered.
That answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Soza? Commissioner Combs is done, I think he has for now.
So you said that the, where you placed the dump had been, cause it used to be close to the, to the fence line, so you moved to?
It's, I don't know if we have. Is there on here or did I? Yeah, it's, it's, it's on the same, I guess it would be. Did they have the, is that, is it up here? You guys have control here, let's see. It, I believe, was there an aerial, aerial view of the lot? There we go. Okay, so previously, it was, I don't know if this will show up, no, look. You see where the tree is, the open space to the left top corner? That's where it was originally, up in that area, and it's been moved over to the opposite corner, top right.
Oh, okay.
And I would like to say that we were very concerned when we did, obviously, we weren't here the last time, but we heard that there was concerns about odor, and that struck home to us. So we went out there, and I would welcome anyone to go out and sample for yourself to see if, if, if you see anything.
I've been there recently, I saw.
Okay.
Looks, looks better.
Thank you.
Your only question for now? Yeah, okay. Ms. Ham?
Thank you. I, I understand. I'm glad that you told us that you are, have been a long-time resident of Gardner. I appreciate that, and I know it's a, it's a odd place, and as you said, it is a commercial, a commercial use property. I think just, I know you haven't completed all of the items, and my understanding is that they, they don't have to wait the whole year, like to January, to reapply. Is that correct? They can apply, reapply once they've completed all of the items?
As you're talking about for the conditional use permit. So there's two things going on here. The conditional use permit, if they go through this process as they're going through right now, they would have to meet all the conditions and anything that was approved through that process, okay? To do what you're talking about, our preference would be that the improvements and anything done to the site is done prior to that issuance or prior, at some date certain. So if we said within 60 days or 90 days of it being issued, to have the site improvements done that way. Going back and reapplying, you do have the opportunity here also that you could put a time limit on the conditional use permit of, you know, the end of the year or year, and if those things are not performed, you would consider a reapplication and may not approve it at that point in time. So there's some differing options here. Again, as you look at this, I wouldn't look at it as everything stops and waits for the improvements and then they come back with.
Okay.
An application. I think this application needs to be acted upon through a recommendation and go to the governing body, and then from there, whatever time limits or whatever conditions are recommended or approved, that would be appropriate. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Okay. All right. I'm glad, I, I, I just, the homes are very close. Thank you for moving the, the trash cans. I just would like to know everything that is, everything that you, and everything that you're planning on doing.
Sure, that's fair. That's fair. And I do, it seems, and maybe this is, this is a poor point of comparison, but I realize that it is right on Main Street and there are residents very close. That's, I remember when Hoax was there, so that's, I've been here that long, so the, it seems that there's other establishments that are, have similar arrangements, and I guess I would look to see how, how they accommodate things, and maybe that's something we can work together with to, to figure out how they're addressing it, and we can do the same.
Well, thank you for being willing to adjust and make the, being open to.
Absolutely.
The accommodations.
Sure.
I have no further comments or questions.
Okay, cool. Commissioner McNear?
Yes, I, I just had a couple of questions. I'm just a little bit confused here. This looks like a, is this primarily a food trailer? Is that correct?
Yes.
Why did, I get the idea, it seems like it's trying to be a distributed site restaurant, if you will. It just, I mean, it has all the pieces and components of a permanent site restaurant, but it's kind of distributed, you get your storage out here, you get this over there, is this, are you trying to be a full-service restaurant, or what are you trying to?
I'm the, I'll, if the owners want to discuss, they can. I'm representing them, they're here as well to, to make sure everything's good, but the idea is just to provide the service. I don't know that it was definitively pointed out or intentioned to be one or the other. If that, I don't know if that answered your question or not.
This is the city staff. Would it be appropriate to ask the operator to come up and kind of give us an idea of what they're shorting on?
You can, they're part of the application, yes.
Can we ask them to come up and give us their short and midterm kind of vision of what, how this lays out and how it'll grow? Thank you.
Okay, so my name's Darren, and I live at 950 Summer Trail here in Gardner. The ideal is, we, we're a food truck, but we don't wanna have to move every day. A lot of places do it where you can only operate 10 hours a day, and we hook up to, like, water and sewer just because it's easier than having to carry a tank, and that provides smell, so we're trying to prevent that. It's restaurant-based, but it's out of a food truck. I have a setup in Oak Mogie that I did just like this, and it's working great, so who's trying to bring it to Gardner? So I'm not used to doing all this.
No, you're fine. You're doing just fine. No, you're answering the questions perfectly. Were there others that you have?
Nope. I just wanted to kind of hear what, what your plans were.
Eventually, I'd like to open a restaurant, but right now, I'm, I'm using what I have to see how it goes.
I guess my, my, the thing, what caught my eye was the fresh food being stored off in a, in a storage shed.
Yeah.
That seemed a little different.
Yeah, it's, it makes with the health department requirements and everything that.
Okay.
Worked with the health department for years with this.
If they're good with it, then it sounds like.
Yes, sir. As long as it's six inches off the ground and stored in containers and none in, we're, we're safe.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? McNear? Moving on down, Commissioner Juneman? We have our applicants with us.
Question for staff. Could you elaborate on why you're recommending denial? I really caught that in the report.
Originally, the staff recommendation back in March was for approval with a long list of, of conditions, and I think the intent from hearing the public side of this and, and understand when staff formulates, it's staff reports, the original reports, and its original recommendations, we don't get the benefit necessarily of knowing what the public's concerns are and what is going on, so we're evaluating these things based on the code and regulations that are there. So back in March, we had a long list, about, I think, 16 conditions recommending at that point in time. As we went back through this process and staff met with the applicant's representatives as well as hearing the public comment from that March meeting, we just felt that the list of conditions and, you know, the things that just needed to be improved to make this even compatible with the neighborhood or the neighboring residences was pretty arduous and probably would not be able to happen. We didn't have much confidence that it could be done in a timely fashion, so that is why we changed our recommendation, the incompatibility with the nearby residential area as well as the performance side of this.
Any other questions?
I'm just, I'm still thinking, I think.
Okay, we can come back around too. No problem. Commissioner Cooper, anything off the top of your head right now? No? Okay. I'll look back to my right and see if there are any, anything came up down here from Commissioner Combs? Commissioner Soza?
Um, yeah, no.
Okay, Commissioner Ham?
Yeah, I just go back to, I know that there used to be a permanent restaurant on that site, and I just think about what the capabilities of a brick-and-mortar restaurant are able to do versus a food truck, and that just really kind of bothers me a little bit, especially just considering, I'm looking at the pictures and I'm looking at how close, I'm thinking, if a car backs up into a parking lot, that exhaust is going right into that house. That is right on the other side of that fence, like, that's their backyard, and so I'm just thinking about things like that. Just, I understand that it was there, and I understand that it's commercial, it just, the limitations of the spread out and everything that we're looking at, people sitting outside, the noise, the capacity, just what the homeowners hear versus if it's an actual physical building where the people are inside versus people sitting out at parking, at picnic tables, and backing up right until those people, like, their, their quality of life is affected, and so that's just a really basic thinking point.
Anything else you wanna add?
No, I'm done now.
No, no, no. Pause, though. We can take all the time we want, so. McNear? Go ahead. Good. Juneman, you thought maybe something was gonna come to mind?
Yeah, it's just a, just a unique site, you know, it's kind of tough to go off of precedent sometimes with, with what we're, what we're dealing with here. I know this whole process with the food trucks has been going on for a while, so I just wanna make sure we get it right for, in case there are other, other businesses that come along down the road for, ask for these conditional use permits. That'd just be my comment to the rest of the commissioners.
Good.
Ma'am Chair, if you don't mind, I'm gonna chime in just a little bit here in that line. As you recall, with the ordinance changes we had about a year, year and a half ago, when we looked at this, this is one of those reasons why we started looking at, when is a conditional use permit required? When's a temporary use permit required? Remember, the temporary use permit is really intended for those true mobile food truck elements, okay? The truck's going to move off-site when it's outside its business hours, it's coming back to the site, it's the only truck operating on, on the site. The reason this is before you with the conditional use permit is for the reason that you heard earlier from the applicant's representative, things like hooking up to the water, the sewer, the utilities. Now, this is becoming a permanent fixture on the property and a permanent use. As we've compared this, just as you have been in your discussions, a bricks-and-mortar restaurant building, we would be seeing an improvement being made to the property as well as a new building, so you would see things like a new parking lot, the landscaping, the signage. So one of the reasons the conditional use permit process was placed into, into the code was the idea that we should be treating these more permanent fixtures or semi-permanent fixtures similar to a bricks-and-mortar type of restaurant operation. So that's, that's part of the conditional use permit process, and as we discussed when we were looking at those code recommendations, we recognized that there were some sites because of their context with residential around them and things like that, that we would be in some of these difficult scenarios. We've had others like Moose's, who was recently approved, who's in more of a commercial, they're in the downtown area, they've got adjacent commercial activity, so therefore, the sounds, the light, the odors are a little bit more oriented towards downtown. Here, we do have those kinds of conflicts, so that's the struggle that you. So that's the struggle that you have before you, and that's why if, if you do go different than denial, I think the conditions under what parameters are going to be very important.
Ma'am, may I make a comment to that as well?
I'll entertain it, go ahead.
Thank you. You bring up Moose's, and that's one that we were referring to, that we know that they're right up against residents as well, um, on the back of their lot. So anything, again, to my point earlier, anything that maybe they did that helped you with your decision, we'd be definitely going to talk to you about that and accommodate it. And just as a last comment, that, um, this lot was purchased as a commercial lot with the intention of being a business, being a long time ago, but it was purchased with that intent. So if we decline here, I'm struggling to understand what I can do with that property. So just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McNair, did you indicate anything on everything?
Uh, this is the staff. If, um, this sure seems like it would be, I, I'm surprised it hasn't come into a restaurant or something already, uh, prior to this use of the property. If we have, i- if this thing continues to move forward, uh, would it be possible, if somebody did come in and say, I want to build a brick and mortar restaurant, you know, which is actually more in line with the, with the original use and the highest, probably the highest and best use of that land? Is that something that can be changed over to, or what happens to these guys if somebody wants to come in and build a, a restaurant?
I was just checking the zoning here, I just want to double check everything here. So this is, this is considered a C1 commercial lot. So regardless of the conditional use permit decision that's made here, the property itself retains the same development rights as any C1 property, so there are a ver- variety of commercial uses that would be allowed to occur, but they would have to be built and put on the site to our standards, the specific standards for building and site design. So they'd have to meet all of those requirements.
I, I guess, I understand where you're coming from there, Dave. I guess what my question really is, is, uh, so somebody wants to come in, but, uh, it could be a C store, it could be anything, you know, and wants to put something in that space, and we've got a conditional use out here for these guys, uh, you know, uh, what happens, if somebody wants to come in and what happens to these guys? Uh, operating their businesses, that, that happens? That's, that's actually my question.
Yeah. That, that would be between the landowner and whatever the lease agreement is with this operator.
Okay.
So depending on what their private arrangement is, which is nothing that we can take into consideration.
As long as the zoning, the zoning, the use of the code and the zoning remains.
Right.
And system, we're okay.
Right. And so whether the owner has options that they can go and pursue a greater development during this time, I don't know what's in those lease agreements, those are between the operators and the, and the landowners themselves.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I, that was clear in my mind. Thank you, sir.
I, I also do want to note that with Moose's operation here in downtown, the property to the south is zoned commercial as well. So all the property surrounding Moose's is zoned commercial, is not zoned residential, even though there may be a residential use there.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have another question, if I may.
I'll entertain it.
Thank you. The property which Perkland owns as well, but right next to that, to the west, is also commercial, I believe, correct?
Yes. Yes, so, so over to North Circle Drive, from the east edge of this property line to North Circle Drive is zoned C1.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
And that's a vacant lot.
Right. Okay, cool, thanks for that confirmation, Dave. Um, something I've gotten out of practice doing, asking this Chair, was there any ex parte communication received by the commission? Anybody reach out with comments, questions? So we want to make sure we disclose that, so I'm just kind of looking around. I got to get in better practice of doing this, I thought I'd ask for this item. Okay, great. Any other questions, comments, discussion points? I don't have anything else for staff. Not all, entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
After review of the application CUP dash two-three dash zero-two, a conditional use permit for Arsea Kabachi at three twelve West Main Street, and staff cover memo dated Mar- May seventeen twenty twenty-three, Planning Commission recommends denial of the application as proposed and forwards their application to the governing body.
Okay, we have a, a motion made by McNair with a second by him. Does anyone have questions on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero with all in favor.
And as noted earlier, this will go to the governing body for their consideration and, uh, decision.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you being attendance tonight. Okay, regular agenda, item number two. Fairfield Development Z dash two-two dash zero-nine rezoning, PDP dash two-two dash zero-nine preliminary development plan, NPP dash two-two dash zero-six preliminary plat, south of West one hundred and eighty-third street in the vicinity of South Poplar Street, continued from April twenty-four twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. We have a staff presentation tonight.
Wait a second. Is there room to sit there? We good?
Yeah, there might be some discussion out there, but.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as it's stuff, I just wanted to make sure.
They're all, yeah.
Gets a little noisy in the background, it's hard to hear.
Thanks, Bob.
So. Dave Knopf, Community Development Director with the City of Gardner. I'm going to go through the process a little bit, I'm going to try to be quick with these slides in my overview presentation, this has been back and forth a couple of times, so I don't want to, um, go into a lot of detail unless you have specific questions, but I certainly want to give an overview for the audience that's here tonight. So as you'll recall, this was before the Planning Commission, on March twenty-seventh, you held your public hearing at that point in time and considered the item. Staff was recommending approval with the three conditions that you see on the current slide, and Planning Commission recommended denial after the, uh, meeting on the twenty-seventh. The governing body then considered the item on April seventeenth and sent it back to the Planning Commission pending further investigation of traffic alternatives. There was concern about the traffic impact on the adjacent neighborhood. And then the Planning Commission had this item before it on the twenty-fourth of April, one week after the governing body, uh, had it, and therefore the Planning Commission requested additional time to consider potential alternatives. And on May first, the governing body approved the request for additional time, um, to have this before you tonight on May twenty-second. So that's the brief overview of the process. Brief overview of the property, the parcel is approximately forty-two acres, it's located south of one hundred and eighty-third street, Cherokee Street, at Poplar. It's currently zoned R1, single family. Future land use is identified as medium density residential in the sub-area plan, um, the comprehensive plan. The adjacent land uses, as you know, are single-family residential primarily to the east, um, there's duplex to the north, then you have the warehousing in Edgerton to the west and vacant land to the south, or agricultural land to the south. Revised preliminary plat and preliminary plan, um, have come up between the April twenty-fourth timeline and tonight's meeting. So staff met with the applicant, we had discussions about changes that could potentially be made that would reduce the traffic impacts in the, uh, area, and therefore several changes were made to the plan. What you see before you here are the two exhibits, the plat, which is on your left-hand side, and the plan, the preliminary development plan, on the right-hand side. The green shaded area are single-family lots, just so you're aware of that. The differences between the original development plan that was before you on March twenty-seventh and what's before you tonight, um, have changed several parts, or physically have changed in several ways. As regard to road connections, this will only be connected to one hundred and eighty-third street via Poplar. So you'll have a north-south street that's running off of Poplar through the area, which is identified as phase one. The connection that was proposed at one hundred and eighty-fourth terrace has been removed from the plan. In regard to the total number of housing units, the housing units have been reduced to eighty-eight units instead of what was proposed at one hundred and twenty-one. Single-family units were proposed at twenty-seven, have been reduced to nineteen. Again, that's that gray shaded, shaded area that's identified with the RP two zoning area on your, uh, graphic before you. That area is approximately eight point two acres, and then from multifamily units, the townhomes that are being proposed, uh, that number was reduced from ninety-four in the original proposal in March to sixty-nine, and that's on nine point four acres of the property. That's in that kind of, I'll call it off-yellow to brownish color that's identified as the RP four area. In addition to no connections onto one hundred and eighty-fourth terrace, um, there also have been movement of the drainage facility down to the south end of the phase one area. So what I want to make sure everybody understands is there's two phases as part of this preliminary development plan. The first phase is outlined in red, okay, that you see before you, it has a combination of the RP two zoning and the RP four zoning as described earlier. Then the phase two area, which is outlined in purple, the bulk of that area, approximately twenty-four point four acres, will retain its R1 zoning, which it currently has. The zoning to RP two and RP four will still extend into phase two, but nothing in the phase two can be built until there are connections made to either the east or to the south via new roads that would connect eventually up to Gardner Road or to one hundred and eighty-eighth street or some other street of that manner. So at this point in time, the preliminary development plan that's before you is the revised plan for phase one and then phase two as shown. Your potential action tonight per state statutes, you can take one of the following actions, you can res- resubmit your original recommendation, giving the reasons, uh, for that, or you can submit a new and amended recommendation to the governing body. I just want to note here for you all, if you fail to take any action tonight, this will go to the governing body, and that failure to act will be considered a resubmission of your original recommendation. So just be aware of that. The city attorney's here tonight to help with any of the questions that we may have on process moving forward. I placed before you two suggested motions. The first one in light of the Kansas statutes, the first one is motion to resubmit the original Planning Commission recommendation of denial, or you may wish to submit a new recommendation of approval. And with that, we've expanded the number of conditions. There are originally three, we've added four, and one is new, I've highlighted it in red because it came up today in staff, uh, discussion. I don't think it'll create a problem for the applicant, it's just noting that the traffic input, uh, the traffic impact study would have to be revised to reflect the new revised plans. That would be a perfunctory thing that would need to be done. Otherwise, quit, uh, conditions four through six are simply cleanups that need to be added to that plat and to that preliminary development plan. So with that, I will stop and answer any questions that you may have, noting that the applicant is present too.
Okay.
We also have the fire district here, uh, per your request at the last meeting, and we also have, uh, public works available for questions as well.
Fantastic, thanks, Dave. I think now would be a good time, we'll see if the applicant has anything else they'd like to add. Appreciate getting the other folks engaged as, as asked, so if the applicant has anything else to add, um, as presentation, please come forward, state your name and address for the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Curtis Hall, and I'm an attorney with the Polsonelli Firm. Uh, my address is nine hundred West Forty-Eighth Place, Suite nine hundred, Kansas City, Missouri, six four one one two, uh, representing the applicant. Just introduce our team again real quick, I do have Doug Bo- Bohai with ownership, um, Greg Watson with our, our civil engineer, and Janelle Clayton is our traffic engineer. Appreciate staff and their review and the report, and, uh, did want to indicate that we did, uh, add a traffic letter. It, uh, answered a couple of questions that the council had, uh, one of them which was, what is the student traffic, um, on one hundred and eighty-third street if we do, uh, kind of what we're agreeing to do here tonight, which is really the biggest issue we had last time with everybody, and that was the, uh, additional traffic that might, say, cut through the subdivision to the, to the east. And we've really cut off all the, all the inter, interconnection, if you will, to the street network to our east, and so we're all funneling all the traffic to one hundred and eighty-third street, as staff indicated in the report. We removed and re- reduced some of our units in order to, uh, make the fire department happy about that. Uh, we had meetings and discussions with the staff, and we're comfortable with the revision to the plan. Uh, we think it removes the, the primary objections that the residents had in terms of the, uh, additional traffic through the neighborhood. There won't be any, any additional trips through their neighborhood now, because we're cutting off all the traffic. And we understand that going forward, we can't do anything to the south unless and until we get, uh, some access, additional access to Gardner Road or South one hundred and eighty-eighth street. So we understand all of those things. We agree with the stipulations, uh, that are in front of you, um, don't have any issues with those. We're ready to answer any questions if you have any, otherwise, we're just here to answer questions, thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, as the last item was, this is not a public hearing, I'm not going to entertain any public comments. This item will be before the, uh, governing body, and they will have a, I hope so, a public comment section, um, on the, the agenda. Like I said, it's been a long time since I've not seen one, so pretty confident there'll be an opportunity to speak there. So with that, let me ask the ex parte question and try and get fire about that. Anybody on the commission receive any ex parte communication?
I did.
Okay, great.
Um, I don't know what you, I received it from, um, a resident in Fairfield, um, earlier this, uh, evening, um, just to express concerns over, um, what's going on with a developer, displeasure.
Okay. And do you feel like you can still make a fair, important decision tonight?
Yes.
That email that made you lie?
No, no.
Okay, and just as a note to that resident, uh, we always appreciate public comment, but because we're not doing a public hearing, we're not going to read that email into the record, because that would be heard of people who are here and not able to speak tonight, so. Not to discourage people out there from, from contacting the Planning Commission, but that's just not going to be part of the record tonight, so, thank you.
Thanks for the guidance, Spencer, appreciate it. Okay, so we'll start, um, commission discussion. We have the applicant here and, um, staff, we also have some special invited guests, I think the fire department and et al. So Commissioner Combs, do you want to kick us off?
Maybe a comment, a question.
Sure.
Uh, reducing the number of homes, regardless of the type, doesn't immediately address the traffic concerns that we had, I just want to point that out, at least from my point of view. I, I do have a question regarding the, uh, homes on the west compared to the single-family homes that would be on the east of that divider line that, that you showed earlier. And it has to do with value and, and property value of those single-family homes in and around the area. I, I'm, I'm just curious if these were all single-family homes versus, uh, the, the town home or multifamily, uh, type of structure, would the value of the surrounding properties be affected in a more positive way versus, uh, a negative way, which currently is just a perception, there's no reality to that definition? But the, the value of the surrounding properties with this additional development, will that impact those properties negatively?
I don't think so.
And or is there some way that that could be, not explained, but a- at least identified? Because I, I, and I'll, I'll close. I, I understand that there was a concern, uh, related to the single-family home properties and being built on the west side where, uh, the town home or multifamily is going to be built now, meaning the reason that there, that the single-family homes were not planned to be constructed there would and or was because they could not sell or would not be able to be sold. Again, perception is, is not necessarily the reality. But I'm, outside of the traffic, I'm now trying to understand how this might impact the value of the surrounding residents with the type of development that is being requested.
So, so there are two things I want to address. With the traffic concern first, I want to address, by reducing the amount of units, number one, it will impact the traffic, because the amount of traffic generated is reduced.
Oh, by default, I understand.
Correct, so I just want to make sure that, that that's noted upfront. In regard to property values, um, I will tell. In regard to property values, I will tell you that it's a little outside our purview of consideration. We generally are considering the land use relationships. So when we look at these things, there's numerous studies that have been done on property values when they're next to properties that are of a different land use than what may be existing. Some are positive, some are negative. So there's a perceptual side of this, there's a market side of this, and then there's also the owner's side of it as they look at the value of the land and trying to utilize that property to its best purposes. In this case, another influencing factor is already the existing warehouses that are in this area. They're not very far from what's proposed here or what's existing from a residential standpoint. So we do have on the Edgerton side of this several warehouses that are in place already and a new one that is also being built. So I would tell you from a land use perspective, we do look to try to step down the intensity of uses. So if we have a commercial use or an industrial use, we try to buffer it with uses of a higher intensity, lower intensity than a commercial and industrial, slightly higher intensities than single-family. So a lot of times you'll see apartments that are next to commercial land uses before you go into a single-family residential neighborhood. So the common practice is to have that stepped down.
Well, I appreciate that. No other questions?
Okay. Commissioner, so then?
So I understand that the main concern last time that we discussed this was the traffic. So now that they are reducing the number of units, so do they submit another traffic report or is this something that is going to submit later?
It's part of the motion, but we don't have it to review. We're supposed to have been working on that, I thought.
So in regard to traffic, I will tell you, as this plan was being revised and it was being looked at, as indicated by the applicant's representative, there was a letter that was provided that showed that there was a decrease in the amount of traffic. The suggested motion for if you go with the approval type of that, that's why number seven is there, those numbers would have to be incorporated into that traffic impact study. The original study was provided with the original plan. So with that, it was felt by our public works department, our city engineer, that the number had been reduced effectively. The other part of this was, was that by disconnecting from one hundred and eighty-fourth terrace, this traffic would not be going into or directly into the adjacent neighborhood to the east. It would have to go up to Cherokee or one hundred and eighty-third to come out of this development. So.
Still any questions I have?
Commissioner Hamm?
Going back and looking at my notes from our last meeting and traffic, like traffic and one hundred and eighty-fourth, which when I was going through our packet, I was like, okay, they've taken care of that. And they've lowered the number of homes that they are proposing. And I like the fact that phase two can't be complete until there are more arterial routes. Looking at my notes, that seems to check off everything that was addressed at the public hearing last month. And when I was reading the packet, we were saying number seven in the packet and I was like, oh, I want to know what the traffic impact study says with the reduced amount of homes. So I'm very comfortable with this because it seems to have checked a lot of the boxes for the public comments at the last meeting.
You're comfortable without seeing the study?
I would like to see, I would like to see that, to know just how far we are off of those other numbers.
So we do have two people here that could probably respond to that.
Perfect.
The public works director is here tonight from the staff side and the traffic engineer who generated both the TIS, the traffic impact study and the letter with the changes.
I would love to.
If you would like to hear from them, you could certainly have them come up and speak to that.
Yes. I would appreciate that.
Like a good time now to pause?
Yes, yes, I would like to hear.
If we could, you know, get the actual, you know, what was that number before?
The number before was one thousand sixteen. Yes, I was.
Perfect.
There you go. About, right?
Yeah, and, yeah.
And fifteen hundred was our max allowed. One thousand sixteen was what they were looking at with the previous numbers.
Perfect. All right.
I'm sorry.
Wait, who's she speaking to?
Did you want to say something?
What's the question?
Oh, did you want me to address these questions?
Yeah, I think if you have any.
And I want to be careful with the numbers too that you're talking about because there's a difference between overall generation. And I think the thousand sixteen number may have been a number that was going towards the one hundred and eighty-fourth Street in particular.
Yes.
That's cut off.
Yeah, we should be able to see those breakdowns then.
Okay.
And whatever letter was referred to that the council had, I guess. So maybe there was some more information that could have been shared with the commission. Because I don't like seeing last-minute updates here. I don't know what the updated traffic impact study is. And I knew nothing shared with council via the letter. I'm seeing some material.
Try and see if we can get the actual letter.
Okay, Janelle Clayton with Merge Midwest Engineering located at two six six eight West Cattapa Street in Olentha, Kansas. So we did prepare a memo when we looked at what would happen now with this reduced number of units and without directly connecting in to the properties to the east. I was just talking with Kellen because there are nine single-family homes on the other side of that that would technically still be able to use one hundred and eighty-fourth Street. So nine single-family homes could, you know, technically still get into the neighborhood. But the rest of all the other development will utilize Poplar up to one hundred and eighty-third Street. So we can certainly reflect that in the revised traffic study analysis. But what we looked at, you know, when we looked at traffic coming up Poplar to one hundred and eighty-third Street, we were really putting all our traffic onto one hundred and eighty-third Street and to seeing how many trips that would add. One hundred and eighty-third Street is classified as a minor arterial and by city standards, that can take twelve thousand vehicles per day and up to a forty-two thousand vehicle per day limit for a major arterial. So if we're looking at the very low end of twelve thousand vehicles per day, we did traffic counts on one hundred and eighty-third Street and existing vehicles per day is two thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight. So you can add, you know, upwards, close to ten thousand vehicles per day still on that facility and still be within that lower threshold of your minor arterial standards. And when we added, when we put all of our traffic onto Poplar up to one hundred and eighty-third, we were adding just nine hundred cars per day, so we're up to three thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight vehicles per day, still well, well below the twelve thousand vehicle threshold that we have.
All right. Thank you. I think that looks like that might answer questions, or at least that specific one.
Yes, thank you.
Did you have a follow-up?
No, we have.
Might, okay.
Other questions?
Okay, all right. I think that answers the specific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, so that was, that was my concern about knowing what, and like you said, that was, the other one was the fifteen hundred and the one thousand sixteen was with the other, with the one hundred and eighty-fourth. So this, knowing this, that helps me, makes me feel better. So thank you.
Definitely. Yeah, that helps put it into perspective.
Yes.
Because I was like, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that makes sense routing all that, the trip traffic directly to one hundred and eighty-third. So it's using a different matrix because of the different classification of a road. Okay. Commissioner, make your.
First off, I wanted to say thanks to staff and to everybody with the developer and their team for putting a lot of hard work into this. And, you know, it shows through what you delivered to us this evening that you put a lot of thought and effort and came back to us with a lot of those concerns addressed. I got a couple of questions and concerns I wanted to start off with. In lots, one through nineteen, which is the basically bulging in the cul-de-sacs in Fairfield.
The single family there?
All the single families. Just out of curiosity, and I don't know the answer to this, staff, maybe you can help us. What happens, those are actually built in the, what used to be Fairfield subdivision was intended for next phase. Does the deed restrictions and covenants from Fairfield apply to these residences or not? And if not, how does that, does that get superseded or how does all that work?
So that would be between the developer and the homeowners that move in. The city is not a party to covenants and restrictions that are associated with subdivision development. We don't enforce those. We do not have a say in those. So how those are written and how that's done, this developer, this could go with a phase, you know, whatever the name of the subdivision is, phase five, and it has its own specific set of covenants and restrictions that are associated with that.
Okay, thank you, Dave. To the developers then, how do you propose to deal with deed restrictions, covenants? And how do you plan on dealing with the neighborhood and existing covenants and deed restrictions?
Thank you. Kurt Holland.
Really quick, Kurt, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. And just, Curtis is welcome to answer this question if he wants to. I do just want to remind you all, so we're on a rezoning application and our land development code sets out some specific factors and considerations for you all to discuss.
Okay. If that was inappropriate, just let me.
So that's not necessarily something that would factor into whether or not you grant this. If Mr. Holland wants to, and like you all, he's an adult and he gets to do that, but you don't have to.
I didn't mean to ask him.
No, and I wasn't saying you did anything wrong. I just want to make sure. If you don't like Mr. Holland's answer, send Mr. Lee Graham to deny this.
My only comment is, they'll be separate, they'll have our own independent, separate declarations. It won't be part of that development to the east. No plan for that. But typical residential declarations, very common.
Okay, so it'll really like its own subdivision?
It is its own subdivision.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I really wanted to understand. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Sorry for making that more difficult.
No, no, I'm glad you said that because it's a really, yeah, we don't.
I just wanted to know how it works.
I at least asked the question now, you know, but I'll start.
Okay. So is phase one and phase two, they operate independently of each other?
In regard to the preliminary development plan, they operate as one preliminary development plan. So it's, when we have preliminary development plans, we identify a phasing plan as part of that. So phase one and two are part of this preliminary development plan. What's a little bit unusual here is that the zoning for the RP two and the RP four currently extends into phase two. So the rezoning would have this current boundary, as you show there, but there is not a specific set of preliminary development plan parameters for phase two at this point in time.
Thank you. And then if we go into a phase two, is it my, the way the thing reads, it sounds like they would have to cut an additional entrance either to some of the places before any of that could be constructed. Is that correct?
Correct. It would be something that would attack or would have to connect to the east and work its way back to Gardner Road essentially is what we would be trying to do at that point. The phase two area would have to have its own separate, basically a revised PDP, if you would, a preliminary development plan that would then show that, but that would be part of the connections. It could extend on an alignment that is equivalent to where one hundred and eighty-sixth comes out at Gardner Road. It could extend to the south down to one hundred and eighty-eighth and connect. There's multiple ways that that could happen.
Would that also include any connection to Butterland?
There is potential for that, but that would be a consideration that we would look at at the future revised PDP.
So that would be, that would be part of a future.
Correct. And I want to be careful with it because I know at the last meeting when we discussed this, there are things with wetlands, there's things with streamway setbacks up there. So we're not even sure what may be or may not be feasible in that area.
Just to be clear though, just so I make sure I understand, if we go to a phase two, there cannot be a connection to Butterland unless it comes through the process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just going through my questions. Give me just a second, please. Next question. Why were phase one to split?
Well, that came and arose from the conversation between staff and the applicant early on in the process. They have, in the past, oh, sorry. In the past, they have come up with a plan for the whole area, all as part of one. Now, remember back in two thousand eighteen or so, there was an application just for the zoning without a preliminary development plan. As a result of that, the applicant went ahead and went back to the drawing boards and came back with several iterations of plans showing the full development. Staff was not comfortable with some of the densities and things that were being shown. And the idea was by breaking this up into densities to, they could start this development. But without those connections to the east and to the south, staff did not feel that it was timely to go ahead and have any type of specific development plan for that area.
Okay, what happens, this is for the fire district, what happens to fire codes with phase one and/or phase two? Give us an idea of how that works. Thanks, Chief.
My name is Brad Ralston, fire marshal for fire district number one, two four eight zero, west one hundred ninety-first Street, Gardner. To answer your question on that, for this first phase, the way I understand it is that we have less than one hundred units for multifamily and less than thirty. So in the fire code, that requires just the one exit. So having them shut off one hundred and eighty-fourth terrace and then cul-de-sac the end, then that meets those equivalents. Once we get over those additional units, the fire code states that you have to have two separate remote entrances or egress routes. So having that cut off in phase two over to Gardner Road or down south would meet those requirements.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
That's it, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Commissioner, Gina Mann?
Similar to Commissioner Hamm, yeah, I was reading through the report and it seemed like it to me it addressed a lot of the concerns that I had and I've heard from the community as far as generating traffic through the development. Still providing a buffer between the existing single-family homes with new single-family homes and providing that buffer between the heavy commercial use and this industry development. So I don't really have any more questions.
Commissioner Cooper?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Has there been any attempt to cooperate in terms of the homeowners association issues with the residential?
Yeah, I'm going to jump in. Sorry.
Pretty broad questions.
That earlier, which that's not necessarily part of a rezoning. So again, Mr. Holland doesn't necessarily need to answer.
Right. I'm just, I'm interested to know if the property is going to be managed similarly to other multifamily units in the area or if there's been any consideration of that.
I really don't understand your question because I don't, it's so broad. And I mean, I don't know how the other properties are managed in the area. So I'm not sure what, exactly what you mean. Will certainly be managed professionally. Not sure what the concern is though. I'm sorry.
Is it going to be managed by each individual property owner or is it going to be managed by any homeowners association?
The, I'm not exactly sure how we're doing it just yet. You know, there'll be some declarations. There'll likely be an association. So these homes, whether they're single-family or townhomes, would likely be subject to a homes association, but we haven't figured all that part out yet.
Has there been any, and this is probably beyond my authority to ask, but has there been any attempts at communication and cooperation between the developments that's already there?
As far as what?
As far as property use, maintenance, that kind of thing.
Well, they'll maintain their properties. We'll maintain ours. So there won't be any need to necessarily cooperate with them in that regard. We've had neighborhood meetings with them. We've had hearings. We know how they feel about, or certainly felt about the traffic issue. I'm still not quite clear what you're getting at.
There's developments all over the city that have been, have started out as new developments, multifamily, and they have deteriorated.
So, so apologize. I don't know that that's fair to.
It may not be fair, but I. It may not be fair, but I, I'm a citizen and, you know, I'm on the planning commission and I'm looking at all the planning around me and around the other citizens. And it's an issue that I have to turn about, so.
Well, to your point Commissioner Cooper, and I'll look to staff to help me out here. But as we go through the process, depending on, you know, how these plans are allowed, there are certain, you know, codes and certain materials that are allowed in the building phases and stages. So, you know, depending on how all this works out, there is that opportunity. I'm kind of looking at Dave to maybe help confirm what I'm thinking here that, you know, they can't just build a clapboard type of cardboard house. There might not have been as stringent type of material list as we have.
If, if the, right, if the, if the proposed rezoning and the development plan, the preliminary development plan achieve approval through the city council, the governing body, a final development plan then comes in, it comes to the planning commission. It includes things like the architecture and the design standards that are incorporated. All those details get added to that final development plan process. A preliminary development plan, we don't require those details because it's a significant effort to put that together without, without necessarily having approval already. So, that happens. In regard to your question about property maintenance and that, the city has general codes and regulations that all property owners, whether it's multifamily, single-family, commercial, industrial, are required to follow. If they are not doing that, then generally we receive complaints or we receive some type of notice and we pursue it through code enforcement. I don't know if you want to.
Sure, so, and just to piggyback, Dave kind of hit the important part, which is that once these are built, unless, are you managing it yourself as the property developer?
I believe, I believe the townhomes would be, for sure.
So, I mean, generally, once it's built, the planning commission, your role is sort of down. Down the road, if there's an issue, I mean, we've got city nuisance codes. So, those nuisance codes would apply to this the same as it would apply to anyone else's property, whether it's multifamily, single-family, commercial. So, if there's an issue with upkeep or a nuisance issue, the city has a codes department. They can handle that, that can be a complaint driven, it's typically, I would say, a complaint driven procedure as opposed to the city dragging around and forcing you all to work your codes. So, that's how that would come about. But, yeah, other than that, as far as the development plan and the rezoning, we are gonna, we're, this isn't part of rezoning. So, as you guys think about whether this should be RP Four, thinking down the road of what this might look like is not part of, should we rezone this to RP Four? And as it relates to the preliminary development plan, I hear you and certainly nobody wants to have any properties built with the intent, and I don't think there's any intent to let them go by the wayside. Thank you for shaking your head to confirm that for me, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not in anybody's best interest, so.
Right, and it's not in the developer's best interest to do that and then have to come back later and point out that they were the ones that developed. But, yeah, it would be a nuisance codes driven.
I'd like to put a comment out there, I just, as I was listening to this conversation, I'm thinking back to 2008, 2009s, that timeframe, and back to a subdivision that is called Curry Crossing. So, they're northeast of the high school. That time, they, the deed restrictions, this is why I asked the deed restrictions and covenants question. The deed restrictions and covenants at that time had a, had a 2,000 square foot minimum for single-family or single-floor, 1,800 single-floor and like 2,500 for multi floors. And they had certain sizes and certain basins and certain things in that. And then 2008 hit, and what happened was the subdivision went broke. And subsequently, there was 28 lots that were vertical in between built houses. At that time, those built houses were built, had been built out in the 300 and 400,000 dollar range, which in 2008 was a pretty pricey house. And then, all of a sudden, somebody, a developer came in and said, I want to build, I'll buy all these lots out of, out of the broke subdivision. And they put 1,201 square foot front to back splits in next to, which were at that time probably 150, 170,000 dollar houses next to 400,000 dollar houses. Needless to say, there was a lot of people that were upset and that's kind of.
But there's nothing.
I know, I'm just saying, this is what happened in the community.
I know, but that's like noise for the meeting, you know what I mean? Just, I appreciate you bringing that up, but I don't want to see it wrapped around the actual.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, and I'll jump in, so, just as, and I think Dave hit this earlier in the staff report, but this was sent back to you all from the city council because they all could not make a decision based on the traffic information before it. So, this is down to you by the city council, essentially specifically asking guys to check into the traffic a little bit more. And we've heard about the traffic, so, we can hear more and, you know, if you guys are undecided as to the traffic question, maybe redirect our focus a little bit into that.
I don't think, I don't, I think the traffic concern has been addressed. So, I appreciate you roping us back in Spencer. I did have one question and then I'll see if commissioners have others. Why, why the phasing, I get that, but why, why the inclusion of the zoning for just a piece of Phase Two now? I've always heard that to be bad planning practice for what could be viewed as spot zoning? Why are we doing that?
So, there's two things going on. The original application for the rezoning has a legal boundary that's associated with it and that's already been created. So, those boundaries have been somewhat fixed by the application, okay? So, we're retaining that boundary element. Those legal descriptions were put together that way. It is also felt that that RP Two zoning is still a good buffer between the existing zoning and what goes on to the south, whatever it may be. It could be a continuation of more single-family, it could be some other type of housing that hasn't even been proposed at this point in time. So, we were very comfortable with the idea that we stick with the boundary, the legal boundary that has been defined as part of this zoning application and not changing that. And again, knowing that the specifics of how anything is developed within those zoning districts will be part of the Phase Two preliminary development plan revision when it comes forward.
Well, but, so then, I guess my question then, within the motion, item number four is correcting errors within the legal description on both the preliminary plot and preliminary development plan. So, technically, this could be corrected as well.
There's a difference between a typographic and the actual application.
Yeah, asking, because it just said errors. So, I didn't know, just asking for a little bit more detail into what that was. And, and just, like I said, just from previous planning commission meetings and seeing these things quite a few times.
It's a lot cleaner if the boundaries all mesh and it works that way.
Right.
Unfortunately, as we went through this resolution process and trying to get to a point where we had things resolved, this left the zoning boundary the way it was. And I say unfortunately in the sense of it's not as clean. But, the boundary is there and again, anything that happens in that Phase Two has to come back through with the revised preliminary development plan.
So, let me also ask this, what, I guess, why, why is that small piece of the additional rezonings in Phase Two, why is it not included within Phase One? Because it, to me, it sounds like it has nothing to do with the traffic.
It would, it would no longer meet the fire district requirements for the distance with one.
Oh, because, so it's the fire, it's not the traffic then because.
Correct, well, it's a little bit of, it's a little bit of both, they, they run hand in hand. So, it's the number of units which generates the traffic, right? So, those added units plus that distance now becomes the issue without another outlet.
Got it, thank you.
Little, little messier than I see. Yes, yeah, yeah, we're gonna go around all the time.
Quite obvious, but I want, I want a little clarity.
Yeah.
So, the reduced unit total of multifamily in RP Four to 69, that is inclusive of the gray area that's in Phase Two?
That includes nothing in Phase Two, that is only in the Phase One area.
Okay, so.
North of the, so, what's in the red boundary line of this graphic?
Yeah.
The 69 units are within that red area.
Perfect.
The south end, you'll kind of see, you don't see any building footprint, kind of concept footprints there. That's because that's where the stormwater drainage detention facility would be.
Thank you for the clarity, so just carrying on to that question. For me, the, the traffic concerns aren't addressed, I want to make that known. And maybe Mr. Holland can, can help, or even the developer. I'm, I'm concerned, or maybe I'm trying to figure out why 69 now, multifamily units are being squeezed into nine acres versus single-family homes like there are virtually across the street. So, maybe Mr. Holland can help. Plus, for me, as it relates to traffic density, obviously, the multifamily units would tend to bring more traffic than that of a single family home, so.
I guess I'd start with the fact, well, saying first off that the comp plan shows it as being medium density, medium family, you know, medium density.
Medium, right.
And we meet, we're within those parameters, I think we're at six or something like that. So, it's not squeezed in, in our opinion. I'm not sure what your concern about the traffic is, is it the traffic on 183rd Street?
It's unique or not or not, and obviously everything that would feed to that. But specifically, the RP Four with the multifamily units, with, within the development plan, why, why would you squeeze multifamily units right where they are compared to building single-family units in that exact same location?
Okay, well, I think, I think we've mentioned it much, but just to call your attention to it again, to the west, immediate west is several large warehouse buildings, right to our west. Those, so, so it's very challenging to put the single-family homes up against warehouse buildings, right?
What does that mean?
It's just.
Nobody wants to live next to a warehouse.
Not always, not always, it's an opinion.
So, townhomes make a difference.
Do parks those work, just north?
Right, I mean, yeah, so, I think the developer is complying with the comp plan. The traffic, there isn't any traffic issue according to our traffic engineer, according to your city traffic engineer. I'm not sure what traffic concerns you specifically have. This traffic will dump onto 183rd Street. We are not accessing Butternut, to be clear. We're not accessing any of these streets to our east, to be clear with this plan. The traffic to be, you know, that will run to or go to 183rd Street is well, well, well below the capacity of 183rd Street. So, I'm not sure where your concern is regarding traffic.
I'm happy to address that.
Yeah, sure.
Where and or how much, and if it were.
I know you made a comment about Butternut, so I just want to remind you all, there's no current connections from this preliminary development plan into Butternut. And for them to, essentially you, they're rode up around back into Butternut from the south in Phase Two, they would have to come back to you and ask permission to do that. So, I do just want to make sure we're all the same thing, share.
And so, directly, this is not a question of compliance, I totally appreciate that. It's, it's really a question of how often you or your developers have spent time in this area recently. Without this development, there are traffic problems already.
On which streets, I'm not clear still, please tell me.
183rd, 184th, certainly, any, any and around those areas from, coming from the west as well as the east and even the south.
So, just to clarify, we aren't adding any traffic, real traffic to the east, so you understand that, right? We've blocked the traffic from going that direction. So, we can't do anything about an existing safe, or traffic issue in your.
People come home to that particular location. So, would, would not new residents in some manner have the right to use traffic way to the east?
I don't know why they would, they couldn't get, they couldn't get to their home. I'm not sure what you're talking about. They can't, they can't get to their home but through 183rd Street.
So, then, then maybe, maybe it's me, maybe I'm confused. Because in general, today without this development, there is serious traffic problem, dangerous traffic problems. There was a young child, I don't know the age, but their father was, as you're speaking, was hit. And while that's one incident, I fully understand it's difficult to measure against one incident. But the current traffic situation on 183rd, on 184th, and even in and around this neighborhood where individuals get lost coming from the west or either the east to turn around, these were public comments that came out of the planning commission a few months ago. So, that's really just where a key part of my traffic is.
Well, I appreciate that. I think the, the story or the relating of the pedestrian who was hurt maybe took place to the, to the east in that subdivision. And again, we're not accessing that at all. We have no access to those roads, so we're not exacerbating any traffic issue. If there is a traffic issue, I'm not gonna deny it, I don't live there. But we aren't increasing or adding to any of that traffic in that neighborhood. We are adding traffic to 183rd Street, yes. But we're well, well below the capacity of 183rd Street. To my knowledge, the city hasn't acknowledged or said that there's any kind of a traffic issue on 183rd Street. There might be a perception that there's a lot of traffic on 183rd Street. But there's not any real traffic issue there. I think the level of service is probably an A on 183rd Street, which is the highest you can get. I'm guessing it's an A, it might be a B, but it's pretty high. Is it an A? So, that's how we, that's how we look at traffic and look at intersections and whether or not we've got a safety issue. And I think we check all the boxes on that issue, so.
Sure, well, I appreciate.
Yeah, I'm sorry you feel that way, but I understand.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
And maybe the final point, kind of circling back to the value that I mentioned earlier. While you made it very clear that no one's gonna buy a single-family home next to a warehouse, you're making a really big assumption that multifamily units, which are less expensive, will be acquired more rapidly than that of a single-family unit. And, and I have concern secondarily from traffic as it relates to maybe some of the precedent that we in the Gardner community have seen. As Commissioner McNear mentioned, I'll even mention Wildcat Run. That was a development that several of the residents brought up in comparison at the public hearing. So, as, as we hear, those that live in that community and certainly look at what, what is attempting to be done, those are what drive those questions and our concerns.
Yeah, I, I would, just in response, say that the homes we intend to build here are gonna be at least the value of and probably more than the homes that we're building next to. The townhome units will be 250-ish a unit. So, that's substantial in terms of value. I hear this time and again about impact of property value and I have yet to see it in Johnson County anywhere. Even when you're talking about apartment development, which is certainly more dense. And usually, that's where you hear it. It's, it's, I'm not used to hearing the term multifamily with townhomes. You know, twin villas, duplexes, you know, they're more than a single-family home too. So, using the word multifamily, it's just maybe in my brain. I, my, my first immediate thought is apartments when I hear multifamily. That, these are townhomes. So, we think the values will be, we're not, we don't think we're gonna impact any values to the adjoining properties. It's probably an increase in the value or could, I'm not sure if I want us to hear that. But it's certainly not a negative impact. And I would, I would challenge anybody to bring me a study that says that. So, I hear it a lot, don't see it. And I'd love to go talk to the Johnson, Johnson County Appraisers Office. Well, if they were standing here, would probably agree with me.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, number guys, thank you guys, really appreciate it. What we're looking at here is specific to a rezon, right? And the things that planning commission looks at, you know, we have staff report, we've had our, our traffic conversation, and now it's, you know, it's a rezon. So, we look at not only, you know, code, but we look at comprehensive plan. What has this been planned for in the future use? You know, what does that land use map say? You know, is this really a, is it too dense, too intense, or does it fit the character of the neighborhood? You know, we've received public comments, which, that was amazing to have so many folks with us. So, just, you know, reeling everybody back in, this is a rezoning, right? So, we're looking at that zoning and then, you know, from there, okay, what does that planned development look like? And does that meet our, you know, criteria from staff's perspective? So, just kind of reeling everybody back in, we don't care about values, we don't care about HOAs, we don't care about covenants, we don't care about who did what. You know, just very, planning commission's got a set of guidelines to stick by, so just reminding you guys that.
And Madam Chair, I'll just, I'll add to that.
And Madam Chair, I'll just, I'll add to that just briefly. The comprehensive plan, the sub-area plan that was approved for this area that showed as medium-density residential, which says six units to sixteen units per acre. This proposed development is well under the threshold of sixteen, it's closer to that six, it might be slightly over that six units per acre.
And I think that helped there, Dave, to kind of put things into perspective when it comes to, you know, thinking about the density of the, of the use. Commissioner Cooper, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, and it is, and I've had this conversation with Dave before, so I'm just bringing it to the public. But at some point, there has to be, the citizens of the community, their voice has to be measured. And the motion before us, since we talked only about the, the planning, and I, my, my question is, at what point do we value that of the developer over the community versus the community's interest over the developer?
Which, you know, we've got a couple of different motions, you know, there's still our standing motion of denial that we can go with too. So just because staff's making a recommendation, it's just a recommendation, so.
I just wanted to raise that.
Absolutely. I'll just keep going around. Commissioner Cooper, any other final comments?
No, I have a question about the fire, our safety.
Did it get answered? Okay, okay, excellent. Commissioner Jimenez, did you have any final thoughts?
Nope.
Commissioner McNear?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Again, thanks to everybody for the hard work and, and listening back in March and April and May. Tonight has been very helpful for the way I look at this. As I understand it, just so I, I just kind of verbalize what I'm thinking I've heard. We've seen that one hundred and eighty-fourth, one hundred and eighty-fourth terrace, one hundred and eighty-fifth are closed off and cul-de-sacs. And historically, traffic on those is going to be what would have been had those been part of the original, you know, part of the original development. So that's not, that's really not an impact, and the, the two sides of this thing, the poplar don't connect. I'm satisfied with the, the fact that we've been, that people were listening to the concerns of the public that, that we try to restrict access to, and, and of course, it came back to us, there's no traffic through there. And it's also my understanding that any connection to Butternut is going to have to be part of another proposal process and another process similar to this. So at that point, I'm comfortable. Originally, on the first time through this, I had recused myself because I had family and kids and grandkids that lived in the, in the community. And at this point, I, I don't have a problem voting one way or the other on it, because I, I believe that a lot of the concerns at that point have been listened to. And quite frankly, I was impressed with what came back to us tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Ham, anything last minute?
Um, no, to, to lift what Commissioner McNear said, just to make sure that it's on the record. Poplar to one hundred and eighty-third, it's minor arterial, and it can hold twelve thousand, and we're only looking at three thousand, which is much, much improved than what we were looking at before. So that was the major concern, and looking at my notes from our last public hearing, traffic, there were comments about home values and things like that, but the, the majority of the concerns were traffic, and this has met all of those concerns in space.
Commissioners, anything else?
I have anything to add, like, like Commissioner said, with most of the issues that we saw before, there were mass of, on, on the.
Commissioner Combs, any final thoughts?
No other questions.
Okay, just, just a question, since we do have our, our city traffic person. What is that intersection of street operating at as far as the level of service?
Currently, I believe it was a level A in the basically no development scenario in the, in the original TIS. So it, yeah, it's as good as you need for a local street to a arterial connection.
A, a local street?
Well, currently, Poplar, I guess technically would be a future collector, but it's operating as a local right now, so that's Poplar to the north.
Poplar, okay, Poplar operates.
And in the, I believe in the, in all the scenarios, it never got past a level B. But that was, again, the previous development plan, so we will have to look at that again. I don't anticipate it being any different.
Okay, thank you for that. I just wanted a little clarification for the.
Yeah, and just wanted to, to quickly clarify. So the goal of the street network is to take traffic from locals to collectors to arterials. Poplar's essentially a collector in this development plan. So we essentially are putting no traffic on any local streets. And the, yeah, we have no concerns with the arterial and the collector in this case.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, if there's no other questions, comments, are we good? Spencer, you're like, what? Okay, good, got you, got you. There's no other comments, questions, I'll entertain a motion on the side.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
A motion to submit new, a new recommendation of approval of applications Z dash two-two dash zero-nine and PDP dash two-two dash zero-nine rezoning in the associated revised preliminary development plan and PP dash two-two dash zero-six revised preliminary plat for Fairfield townhomes, including proposed phasing and zoning approach to the governing body with the following conditions. One, approval of the deviation as presented in the staff report. Okay, that's okay. Number two, the storm water management plan shall meet the conveyance, detention, water quality, and other requirements found entitled for T and City of Yard and Municipal Code and other incorporated documents. Three, no further development will be allowed past phase one unless access is provided to Gardner Road and or one hundred and eighty-eighth Street. Four, connect errors with the legal description on both the preliminary plat and preliminary development plan. Five, correct the cul-de-sac right of way for, location for both one hundred and eighty-fourth and one hundred and eighty-fifth Street. And, and six, provide street and op, and open civic space types to the preliminary development plan. Seven, submit updated traffic impact study reflecting revised preliminary, or preliminary development plan.
Okay, we have a motion made by McNear with a second by Ham. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? No. So the motion carries with.
We had one opposed?
We had two.
Two?
Yeah, I heard.
Which ones? I'm sorry.
It would be Cooper and Mater are the no's. Was there another no now on this end? I thought I heard five, five yays and, and two, and two no's.
Okay, it went so fast.
I heard it.
Okay.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm in charge, Dave. Thanks for the double check. Yep, so for the, for the record, then it would be Mater and Cooper being the nays.
Who's the no?
All right, moving on, the last item here, we have a discussion item being number one, the Kansas Open Meetings Act. We have coma training. Do we have a brief presentation seeking on that? What are we waiting on?
I think we're just letting the room clear out for a second.
Well, everyone can stay if they want to.
All right.
If you find it riveting, feel free to stay if you want. There's this.
Dave, you ready?
I'm ready.
Cool. So I, we, yeah, I will try to get through this fairly quickly. We just wanted to, we've got some new members on, welcome aboard. We wanted to give you a quick, just brief update, refresher on the Kansas Open Meetings Act or coma. So just again, so this is a state statute type thing. It's KSA seventy-five forty-three seventeen, in case any of you were curious. It's from the seventies, and the intent was to ensure an open government to the public. And when the legislature passed this, they made a specific intent that it was going to be interpreted liberally. And what that means is that if there's any questions, it gets interpreted in favor of openness to the public. So it applies to covered entities and meetings. And just so we're all on the same page, your Planning Commission, and I give this to BZAS too, so your Board of Zoning Appeals, but your Planning Commission is a covered entity, and these Planning Commission meetings are meetings. You guys probably didn't need me to tell you that. The important stuff is getting into what is a meeting. So there's a statutory definition, gathering or assembly, use of telephone or any other medium, so in-person, Zoom, phone, all of that, by a majority of the membership of this body for the purpose of discussing the business of this body. So the important things there are, you know, our majority, that's always going to be four on this, and if there's open seats, they still count towards that. So if there's two empties, it doesn't change what our majority is, we still have four there, and it triggers the Open Meetings Act. So one of the things that hits in that statute is interactive communication. So obviously, regular special meetings, anytime you guys get an email from Melissa and you see a notice or an agenda go out, that's a meeting, coma applies. Work session's the same. If you're all on a conference call together, that's a meeting. And we'll get to any potential exceptions there, but if you're on together talking about this stuff, it's a meeting. That can go to video calls, that can go to chance meetings. So if for some reason all of you go to the grocery store at the same time, and you decide to start, start talking about the Planning Commission because you just can't get enough of it while you're here, you're violating the Open Meetings Act. If you all meet at the store and want to talk about the Royals or just about how bad I messed up last week, that's probably fine. But once you start talking about Planning Commission business, we get into the Open Meetings Act. So one thing to, I guess, point out on this is online communication is a newer issue. And the Attorney General's office enforces this, and they're always kind of catching up to everything. But emails can kick into a meeting and count as an interactive communication, and they call it serial messages, serial meetings. So if one of you emails the other one even about the Planning Commission, that's okay, that's not an open meeting. If one of you sends an email to all of, everybody else, now we're getting into the Open Meetings Act. And if you try to get around it by me emailing each one of you one by one by one, one minute apart, we call that a serial communication. That's an interactive communication, a majority of the body is in there. So even if I just email four of them, sorry, there we go, now there's something to talk about. We violated coma. So you need to be cognizant of, it's not just the physical presence or all of you being together, but those one-on-one communications, add them all up, and if it gets to a majority, we're into the Open Meetings Act. The other thing is, is again, you are welcome to all meet together at the store or wherever. You're all welcome to get on a text chain or one-on-one text until you start talking about the business of the body. So the business of the body here is the Planning Commission, so zoning, development, all of that, that's where you need to be cognizant of. These meetings are recorded, everybody knows who's on this body, so we always want you to avoid the appearance of impropriety. If there's four or more of you at a meeting of some other group, just be aware. And there's nothing stopping those four, or five, six, seven of you from getting together and talking about whatever you want. Just always be aware of how that might look and make sure you're not accidentally talking about the last meeting or the next meeting or what new development you might like to see. And it doesn't require a vote, it doesn't require any binding action to be taking, you just have to be there and, and talk about the business, business of the body. So I hit this a little bit on serial meetings. The important thing is, is there's one common topic throughout multiple communications, and those multiple communications add up to become an open meeting. So one example, that's a curse of social media, but there was a county board of commissioners, it was three people, they were out in central Kansas. They had a vote on a development plan after the meeting. No surprise, a Facebook conversation started up on the county community Facebook page. Two of the three commissioners got on that comment section, were going back and forth, talking to each other and responding to questions and saying why they voted like they voted and what they thought about the plan. And once they started talking to each other about that in the comments and directly commenting to each other, the Attorney General found that that was an Open Meetings Act issue, they violated the Open Meetings Act. So just be aware, I mean, lots of Facebook issues, it could be Twitter, it could be Nextdoor, the Ring app, or whatever there is out there now. Just be aware that once you start feel that congregation happening, you need to be careful. So what the Open Meetings Act requires is that meetings be open to the public. You can't take any binding action by secret ballot, so you all don't really go into executive session. But you'll notice the city council will go into executive session, and they're not taking any binding action back there, they're just talking about something. You can't prohibit the use of recording devices, and these are all recorded anyway, so that's pretty easy. You have to give the notice, date, time, place of meeting, that's why our notices go out. And we don't have to publish our agendas, but if there is an agenda, we publish it. So technically, we don't need an agenda, but you always have one, and we always make that public. So closing out here, the teeth of this is that there are penalties for messing up, it's not just slap on the wrist. So the Attorney General can come in and undo a decision you made if it was made in violation of the Open Meetings Act. They can fine the city or individually each of you five hundred dollars. They can assess the court costs of having to impose those, they can assess attorney's fees, and they can invalidate any action you take, they can pull you out of office. So, you know, I've never seen anyone that, that we represent get into an Open Meetings Act violation, have the Attorney General come after them. So I would love it if you guys could keep our streak alive. I have full faith that you will. And really, the important thing is always going to be just, you're never going to have a chance meeting with a body this big where like five of you are all at the same place for the most part. But just watch those communications, those emails back and forth, or texts, or whatever, phone calls count, that type of thing. So just be cognizant as you're deliberating and coming to opinions that, you know, we're doing it here in front of everyone and always err on the side of everybody seeing your thought process. And that's it.
Speaking of thought processes, I know, I know that tonight Commissioner McNear voted, and the last time we voted on this, you didn't because you, your family lived in that community, and so I'm just, I'm a little concerned about how that might come across.
Sure, so an abstentions and recusals aren't necessarily an Open Meetings Act thing, but I'll touch it real briefly. So a recusal is if you have a conflict of interest, and it's usually a money conflict of interest, you get up and you leave, that's a recusal. An abstention is just saying, I don't know that I can make this vote today. Mr. McNear, Commissioner McNear, it kind of explained why, there's a family issue, and it sounds like in the last whatever month since we discussed it, that we've had more time to consider with family, and, and that, I guess you were comfortable making that decision. The decision to abstain is up to each of you and, and your personal judgment. And I would encourage you, again, err on the side of against voting if you think there's a conflict or an issue. And always, you guys are welcome to contact staff. If you don't want to bother Dave, you are always welcome to contact me. My email's super easy, it is slow@mvp law dot com.
Whoa.
I will get back to you fast, or as fast as I can.
Fully.
Yeah. And if that doesn't work, you, my direct office line is on our website, you can look me up and give that a call, it rings straight to my cell phone. So, yeah, it's unfortunate.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So it, because I, I was, I had, because he, back in March, he said, no, I can't vote it, you know. And all of a sudden today, he was, he said he would. So I, I didn't understand. I didn't understand why he was able to do today.
Sure, and so you all know the conversation we had was me asking if he was going to abstain or recuse or not, and making sure that whatever decision was announced to you all, so.
And just to be clear, just to be clear, I made, made it very clear that the reason that I was not abstaining today is that the issues that caused, prevented me from voting for or against it, which was safety in the neighborhood of Fairfield, had been addressed. And I felt comfortable that, that not only my kids and grandkids were taken care of or were being considered, but all the residents of Fairfield and, and, and the developer had come back with a, well, with.
And without turning this into too much of a Machiavelli, the ends justify. At the end of the day, that vote wasn't the deciding vote, so less of an issue there, it wasn't a four-three, it was a five-two. So it would have been a four-two-one without him, but not that, yeah, just, so you all know, I mean, the end result was going to be the same whether he abstained or not.
Impropriety, which is what all of the Open Meeting Acts says about. And I've worked in government long enough that I know that anything can be the appearance of impropriety. And when that happened, it raised a red flag for me. And I felt like if it's raising a red flag for me, it's probably raising a red flag for somebody else, and I felt like we should address it openly. And that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
No, yeah, I appreciate you guys, that's, yeah, spirit of openness, so.
Absolutely.
I just, and I just want to reiterate something that you had.
I just, and I just want to reiterate something that you had mentioned earlier, a little bit different topic. Conversations about how you vote and how you feel when they go out there in the public and you start doing that, I want you to understand, there are people that are monitoring those things, and I've always told my planning commissions before, be very careful about how you portray yourself and what you say in texts and in emails. It's not an open meeting side of this, but if an applicant or a citizen feels wrong by a decision was made, and they decide to do a court challenge, they're going to call all of that open public conversation that you put out there with your own individual opinions about how you felt, and they're going to utilize that. So, you've got to be very careful, because when we take votes, it's part of the reason some of these motions are written the way they are, because that should be a common understanding that you all understand the motion, and you're voting on it based on what you heard as part of the meeting and the record of the meeting. You can have disagreements, obviously. It does not mean that you have to vote unanimously for or against it, but you do have to be very careful about how you're portraying yourselves outside of the meeting framework and format, I think, from that standpoint, Spencer.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, outside of this, I litigate, and Facebook posts, emails, texts are in every single case, it's an exhibit, so just assume that someone's going to see, if you're talking about planning commission stuff, text, email, whatever, assume at some point someone might have, probably me, since I would be defending the city, will have to look through that. So, if you don't want me to see it, you know, maybe don't say it.
Right?
Yeah.
So, it's.
Yeah, and like, that's the only cool part of my job, is snooping through people's phones.
So, it's okay to reach out to you if you have a question regarding the process?
Right, absolutely, yeah. And you're welcome to email Dave and I on the same email, but.
Because I was emailing him, I didn't know if it was okay to reach out to you, otherwise you're going to be charged with the city, I was afraid of that.
No, so, here's the thing, Dave, what I would recommend is you guys start with Dave, because 99% of the time, he's going to know the answer, and probably faster than me. If Dave doesn't know, his next email is usually to me, and a lot of times, he'll CC you guys on his email to me, but, so, you know, your staff is a good resource, I would start with him. But I just want you to be aware, I'm available for you all, so.
It's, it's part of, it's part of the service they're here to provide you. So, I would tell you, I like being in on those, just because I know what's going on, it helps me later on when I'm talking to Spencer, and if we're talking about a case, and he goes, oh, by the way, did you know XYZ Commissioner has, and I'm kind of surprised by that, I'd rather that I know upfront if there's an issue there coming into the meetings.
So, you guys are aware, unless you're complaining about Dave, I'm going to probably forward whatever you sent me in my response, so he's aware. And if you complain, and it's funny, he's probably going to see it anyway, too.
You can include me in on the complaint, it doesn't matter.
You can leave me at complaints about me.
It doesn't offend me, I've been called a lot of things in my career, so.
Well, and since I'm the newest member, just to be clear, back to the coma piece, if we find ourselves in the same, same location as other commissioners, and we're talking about the Royals, no problem.
Right.
Not that there's even a particular problem that we're talking about planning commission items. However, if it's two or more, and you're talking about planning commission items, that is deemed a, maybe, in general.
No, so it still has to be a majority of you. So, two of you can get together and talk about, like, if you have a question and you want to ask your chair, that's fine. So, it would be four or more of you guys would contest, so.
And then the serial.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I, I will.
But watch the reply all.
Yeah, please don't ever reply all to these, yeah, that's the rule.
I will tell you this, though, too, is, if you find yourselves at meetings and one of you does not feel comfortable being seen in that conversation, do not be offended if that other member says, hey, I don't really want to talk about this, because so many of these issues, and I think this is what Commissioner Cooper's kind of getting to, they're individual calls. You know, there's a lot of gray area that's sitting in here, and it's just like I was told as a private consultant and other things that I did in past career, you know, you want to be careful who you're seeing with and what you're maybe talking to, because the assumption isn't always that it's just talking about the Royals.
Right.
I, I used to have to be, I still have to be very careful. I worked for the city of Gardner, I have a lot of consulting friends, because I had 20 years of consulting experience, so I bridge that gap a lot. Well, me going to lunch with a consultant that I know is a friend, but yet has a case before us, is a planning commission, if I'm sitting at a restaurant at Austin's, for instance, and some citizens see me and they go, oh, wait a minute, what's going on there, right? Are they buying, are they buying me lunch? Or, you know, all kinds of things. So, it's the same kind of thing in these conversations, just being careful, and if one of you does not feel comfortable in engaging in that, let the other one know politely and walk away. And don't be offended if that happens, because it's an individual call at that point, too.
Spencer, anybody else have anything they want to bring up for Spencer or staff?
I was, I was going to make a motion, close the meeting.
Okay.
Well, I do, I do want to bring up one item before we.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
But we do have a first and a second.
Yeah, this will be very quickly. We will have a meeting next month, okay? There is one item on the agenda at this point, which is the capital improvements program review, which is the consistency with the comp plan, it's an annual process, so the finance director's putting together all that information, and that'll be next month on the 26th for you all, so just be aware of that. During the next few weeks, I am out from Memorial Day through Juneteenth, so I will not be in the office, and if, if you try to reach me, I, pretty much, you won't hear from me.
Good.
So.
Getting that slow email.
I'm going to be only emailing to slow, that's it. Mainly because I'm going to be in time zones that are far off from this time zone. So, even, even if you do try to reach me, odds are, I'm not looking at it, but the second odd is, I'm going to be so far behind that it's not going to matter. So, Bob, Bob will be available to you, Spencer obviously is available to you, with no big items coming up, no applications, you shouldn't have a whole lot of questions on cases and things like that. Also, I'm going to be talking to the C administrator and that, just to confirm, but the two cases you had tonight, my intent is to hold those until June 20th, planning, city council meeting. Because of the intricacy of both of those, I felt more comfortable that I'd be here for those city council discussions on those two items, because if I'm going to miss the city council meeting. So, I just wanted to make you all aware of that, if you get emails, or send me an email, you're going to get a response back, an auto response that just says, yeah, good luck.
Enjoy.
So, yeah.
Okay.
And I've got a question on that email that I received. So, should, like, that just so happened to come in before I was coming here, from now on, like, if I were to have received that yesterday, send that on to you?
I would, I think that we would appreciate getting copies of it.
I can send you.
Primarily because we can put that in the record for the case, and that way, we can, you know, label it as came to planning commissioner, and it's at least in there.
Okay.
For the, for the files.
Okay.
It may not come into the record as part, as you noticed tonight, it was not read into the record as necessarily that, because that would have been unfair to the people who were sitting here that we weren't allowing to speak, not allowing, weren't willing to invite to speak. So, I think that's important. But certainly, when you all have those kinds of communications, feel comfortable, if they're asking you questions and that, forward them to me, we can sometimes respond from a staff viewpoint, instead of you all trying to respond and maybe saying something that isn't accurate or is just not, you're not sure, but you feel like you have to respond, and you find yourself then in a conversation.
An easy way just to engage you, right? Just be like, you know, hey, I'm going to engage staff, I copy you on.
Yeah, and you do a great job, you've done that before on a couple things, where you've emailed me and said, hey, got this, or whatever, and I think Commissioner Sosa's done that too a couple times, and we either handle, you know, get it to the right staff member or whatever to get it addressed.
So, the best way, just, or go, and go forward to the staff, you or one of the staff, and say, hey, staff, please answer this question.
Yeah, yeah. Received this email last night, could you take a look at it and address it?
Always start with Bob.
It ends up there most times anyways.
Well, and it's forward or backward, it's still Bob.
But, but we will try to respond, and then that way, a lot of times, what we'll do is, we'll either copy you or blind copy you in on our responses, so that you know that we responded and you know what we said.
Okay. I'll send that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Perfect. All right, let's see if we can proceed. We've got a motion made by Juneman with a second by McNeer to adjourn. All those in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Disposed, meetings adjourned.